I'd like to call this special committee of the whole meeting to order. Today, we're doing budget hearings. It is, I'm sorry, it's November. Help me.
19th.
19th, thank you. At about 10:02 a.m. Addie, would you call the roll?
Maddox.
Here.
Posh.
Russell.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Petras.
Here.
Okay, Posh is excused. We have a few items on the agenda today. First, we're going to go over the overall budget and the Finance Department. Then, we're going to talk about the budget from the mayor's office, then the municipal court, the Law Department, and finally, City Council's budget tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. And Thursday at 10:00 a.m., we will have budget hearings for other departments. Today's meeting should go till about 1:00 p.m. So are we going to start with there or?
Sure. Let's see. Can you guys? Okay, yes. I just wanted to express my gratitude to council for going through this process again with us this year. We are going to be going through, obviously, the full budget. We'll be going through each of the departments and our hopes for the use of funds next year. And I'm looking forward to it. And I do want to express again, you know, after the conversation that we had last night, it is our intention to provide the council and the public with as much information as possible. This has been, obviously, a trying year with ARPA and various other things that we've had to contend with. And so, we appreciate your patience as we work through this process, but we expect it to be a full and robust process, and we're looking forward to your questions and moving forward. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Director Schuster to get us started.
So, we're going to go over the 2025 proposed budget. So, this year, for the budgeted revenues. This year, we're proposing $97.4 million.
Excuse me, I think your mic.
Is that better? Okay. So, for the 2025 total budgeted revenues, this year, we're budgeting $97.4 million. The biggest increases are the property taxes, the income taxes, and the interest revenue. The property taxes are increasing from last year's property tax estimate, 3.3% or $4.2 Some of the biggest decreases that we're showing for the 2025 budget is the intergovernmental grant contracts. That includes grants, CDBG, home. And then, another big one was the fees, license, and permits, and that is basically the building fees. You guys have any questions?
So regarding the grants, if I remember correctly, we had a grant writer that we were working with, Millennium or Millennial, maybe? Is it the case that we need maybe more capacity, that it would be helpful if we funded a larger contract with them so that we could get more grant dollars? Or is it just that there aren't as many grant dollars that this year we're looking at backing down or?
So, one of the things with this 2025 budget, I did not budget any grant that we did not know we got for sure.
Okay.
So, I think we just got a grant on Friday, $800,000. That is not in this.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's sort of standard. We don't want to make an estimate and rely on revenues that we don't know that we're going to get, but we do anticipate continuing on with Millennium strategies and possibly expanding our work with them to include ongoing compliance with grants and tracking of grants as well. So, we're looking forward to an expanded relationship with them to make sure that, you know, we're going for the grants that we, you know, are eligible for as much as possible to bring money in and that we are fulfilling our responsibilities under those grants as well.
Ms. Kuta? Following up on that, is there a possibility of having a grant writer in-house in the future?
That's a possibility. I think, you know, we're always looking at the things that we contract out and trying to bring them in, in-house, when it's useful. I don't, I don't know necessarily that even having somebody specifically tasked with coordinating, writing grants, you know, on staff as a grant writer specifically and exclusively would preclude the benefit of having contracted help on that as well, though. But that's something that we can take a look at and whether or not the trade-off, if we were to make that trade-off, would be worthwhile. The benefits in this case of using a firm like Millennium or the variety of other firms that are out there is that they have an entire, you know, practice, multiple people taking a look at grants. They've got multiple clients who might be bringing them grants that they see that we're eligible for as well. And so, they can introduce us to things that we might not otherwise find on our own. But that is well-advised, and I, you know, that's one of the things that we are constantly looking at, bringing certain things in-house that we historically have contracted out for one reason or another. Sure.
Here's a breakdown of the $97.4 million estimated revenues for 2025. The municipal income tax makes up about 38% of our estimated budget, and it's only going to increase by 1.39%, which is starting to flatten out. The property tax is the next highest budgeted revenues, which is 22% of the budget. That's, the county did the new property valuations, and the 4.2% is a little lower than they estimated, but I wanted to be conservative for ones that we won't be collecting. And then, the other one is the interest revenues. That's slated to increase by $753,000. We'll have to start watching that as we start spending the ARPA funds down because half the money in the bank is the ARPA funds.
Actually, just to provide a little bit more on the property tax estimate that we're working with, one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that we are being a bit more conservative in our expectations of revenue is because, A, we can't be quite sure about the results of anybody contesting their valuation over the course of the next, I believe, the Board of Review, Board of Revision, rather, process starts in January. And so, we can't be sure about what that will result in in terms of the total valuation of properties in the city. But also, we want to make sure that we're making room in our estimate for non-payment, delinquencies, and even to the point of tax foreclosures that we might have to contend with depending on how much somebody's tax bill increases over the next year.
So, I'm a little perplexed by the income tax revenue only going up 1 point whatever percent. I mean, given that nationwide, it's a lot more because with inflation also came a pretty significant rise in wages. So, what would you attribute our kind of sluggish growth? Or is that typical, 1 point? I'm sorry. Is 1.3% typical?
Yeah, last year, it went up 3%. We budgeted for 2024, 3%. So, this, 1.3%. We're going to make our 2024 number, our estimated number, but not by much. So, I didn't want to budget more than what we were going to get in. It's easier to increase than decrease.
So, this is a pessimistic view? I mean, maybe that's not the right word.
Conservative.
Conservative, there you go.
Yes.
Better.
Actually, before we move on, I did want to also mention, and I think maybe we had some of this discussion last night as well, about some of our fees for some of the things that we provide. And we will be taking a look at things like, I think we discussed recreation fees and, you know, doing an analysis of that and other potential ways that we can increase the usage of some of the services that we provide. For instance, the fitness center. And with the new director, we'll be working on that as well and a variety of other potential changes that we might be asking council to take a look at or making changes on an administrative level, too, when it comes to things like, you know, fees for, like, parking violations and those sorts of things that haven't been looked at in quite a while. We don't want to overburden our residents or visitors, but we also want to be reasonable and not, you know, on the low side, just be on the low side and take a look at the fees and fines that come along with those things as well. So, we'll be talking with council about that over the next several months. I say that to say that may change our estimate of fines and fees in terms of the revenue.
So, for the 2025 total budgeted expenses are $98.3 million. It's a 26% decrease from the total 2024 adaptive budgeted expenses. The main decrease was for capital for the 2025 year. So, for the 2024 year, council and the mayor was very generous with a $33 million capital budget. We are not doing that this year. With all the changes with the ARPA and getting the projects done that were budgeted this year, we only budgeted for the 2025 capital what is needed, and that the city will come back to council and ask for, I guess, 2025 budgeted capital next year, once the year starts going and these ARPA projects get going.
Yeah, that's, I think that's an accurate, you know, explanation. The concern that I have from an operational standpoint is that we've got a lot of projects that are in the hopper right now, and we want to make sure that we have capacity to actually get those jobs done. That includes the work that we're going to be doing with Leopardo, which is a great deal of capital improvement to our facilities. We know that that's going to take a while, but we anticipate that, you know, next year, they'll be doing that work. Obviously, we've got the ARPA work that we need to get done, you know, once the things are contracted and set for that, and that will also be taking place next year. And so, from an operational standpoint, some of the additional capital improvements may cause a strain on our capacity administratively. And so, I wanted to take a bit to analyze how well we're doing getting these ARPA jobs complete, getting this Leopardo work complete before bringing an additional set of capital improvements to council for your consideration. So, I just wanted to take some time and not include that in this initial budget, but I do anticipate coming back to council and having a conversation with you about what additional capital priorities we may want to pursue once 2025 starts going.
The September 30 financials reflected a balance in the finance capital projects of $8,821. Are you expecting that to just kind of be folded back into the general fund in order to go ahead with a balanced budget in 2025?
No. So, through the end of September, you're right, and then the projections at the end of the year is to have a fund balance in the 402 of $5.3 million.
Okay.
And that will be used for any additional capital and the capital that we budgeted for the police cars that need bought, that's going to be like $650,000 to $700,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, am I understanding correctly that if we're looking at the 2025 budgeted expenses, so, we have $4.4 million for capital expenses, and our thought is that if next year we realize that revenues were higher than we were expecting, then we might be able to use some of that for capital expenses? Is that?
This is budgeted right now, the 4.4.
Right.
So, anything after that, we would come back to council.
Okay.
And not all that is paid out of the 402. That's a lot of the sewer and water project.
I guess, so, one of my concerns is that then, looking further in the future at 2026, I just want to make sure that we have enough capital investment to ensure that we're adequately maintaining things because I think that a lot of people feel that a lot of the things that we're facing as a city right now are a result of many years of deferred maintenance. And so, we have been very fortunate to be able to put a lot, invest a lot into our city. I just want to make sure that if we're putting 4.4 in next year, that in 26, we're able to increase it to ensure that we're able to adequately fund things.
You can actually increase it for the 2025 budget right now. Our main concern is getting the projects that have already been budgeted in 2024 and the ARPA projects. Just because we're going to encumber them by the end of the year, we still have two years to spend all the money, and we want to ensure that we're spending all the money first before additional capital comes on. That's our top priority, is the ARPA.
Our concern is, you know, if we have to expend the dollars and complete the projects within that timeframe, we don't want to end up in a situation where, at the end of that two-year, you know, period, that the federal government doesn't appreciate our progress and attempts to claw back any of that money. So, that's sort of our priority. When it comes to additional dollars, I believe we do have dollars that we could expend on capital projects. We didn't want to commit them and create an expectation without further analysis of completion in 2025, and we're not sure we'll have the capacity to get all of the projects completed in 2025. That might be additional to what we have currently budgeted. But I will say this, throughout the course of 2025, a lot of the conversation won't necessarily be about available dollars, but will be about prioritizing capital needs that are over and above the $18 million of work that Leopardo Energy is planning to do, over and above the, you know, the completion of the ARPA work that we'll be doing. So, those, that, when we come against some capital needs, we'll be having that conversation between the administration and the council about what additional capacity we have operationally to get more projects done and then sort of how we prioritize the need of the capital improvements as well. And just for everybody's sort of further edification on this, right now, we're in the process of adding capacity in Public Works, in the Department of Public Works. Right now, we have a Director of Public Works and an Assistant Director of Public Works, and we've been in the process of searching for and interviewing potential candidates for an additional Assistant Director of Public Works, which would create a structure where you've got a Director, you've got an Assistant Director that focuses on operations. So, that would be your daily tasks, your refuse and recycling collection, your street sweeping, your leaf collection when that season rolls around, snow plowing, those sorts of things. The second Assistant Director would be focused on capital projects, our larger road projects, you know, facilities, either building or repairing. And we are also, and we've been in talks about what it would look like to move our Public Properties Division out of Parks and Recreation and into the Department of Public Works, which would then further increase capacity in Public Works to achieve some of the goals that we have and consolidate people who are doing similar jobs in order to maximize on the ability to cross-train and recruit, you know, people from one task to another within the Department of Public Works. All of that is sort of preface to this idea that once we get that capital projects-specific Assistant Director onboard, we'll have a little bit more capacity to do some of that, you know, planning for both the capital projects and the maintenance of the improvements that we'll be working on over time with that Assistant Director for Capital Projects as sort of the lead of that conversation. So, we're feeling the exact same things that you're feeling, Councilman, when it comes to the need to maintain the improvements that we're making over time, and we're trying to build capacity so our leadership in Public Works isn't so overstretched, frankly. They're doing a fantastic job, but I also know that there is more on the Director's plate than should be.
So, just so I'm clear on this, ARPA and Leopardo aside, the $30 million that we put into capital projects last year is somewhat atypical amount. And what, I guess, let me make this a question instead of a statement. So, what would be our capacity financially for capital projects for 2025 that's not currently spoken for?
Well, that depends. So, in part, it depends on how much we are willing to remove from our, you know, sort of unencumbered balance in the general fund. You know, we don't want to get too low in that sort of reserve because it could impact our credit rating, but we also don't want to keep it unnecessarily or artificially high so that we've got some wiggle room to spend money on capital projects. Another thing that it may depend on is interest rates and whether or not it's more attractive to finance some of the improvements that we might want to make, and that's something that we'll have to see over time as, I don't know how interest rates are going to respond and how these things are going to develop, and so, that's going to be something we're going to have to keep our eye on. But it might be a better idea to finance some of these improvements if that market makes more sense than spending cash. So, that's why we don't know yet.
So, there's not really a balance left. It's just, you know, how much we would want to go into to unencumbered funds?
That, and additionally, importantly, I think that one of the things that we have gotten away from and we're trying to work back toward is a long-term capital plan. And that's why we need to build capacity specifically when it comes to capital projects so that we can have somebody who is dedicated to helping us with an expert eye, plan for capital projects as they need to be planned for five, 10, 15 years in advance so that we can have a plan that we're working from. We may shift from the plan when necessary, but having a long-term capital plan is something that we're trying to prepare for, which is another reason why we sort of want to hold off until we can get that planning process underway while, of course, still doing some capital improvements and making some capital expenditures like the ongoing conversion of our police fleet to a more economical, more comfortable, frankly, and more environmentally sustainable option.
Quick question along those lines. So, outside of the capital expenses from ARPA and Leopardo, what does your gut tell you as an appropriate capital investment per year to ensure that we're adequately, like, maintaining our properties? Is it 5 million, 10 million? Do you have any sort of sense of what that number is? Because I see 4.4 million, and we've had this conversation about, well, you know, unencumbered funds, we might be able to make some more investments, but is 4.4 sufficient in the long term or is it closer to 10 million or some other number? I just don't know. What does, what does your gut tell you?
That's hard to say because it's not just general fund capital. This is sewer, water, refuse. So, each one has a different funding source. For a general fund department overall, with the police and the fire, because they need such big ticketed items that, you know, we're getting the fire engine to rescues, we just got the aerial truck in. So, at one time, I could have said 5 million, but now it could only be 2 million. It just depends, as long as, like, the mayor was saying, that we need a capital plan in place so we can determine what is a good number for capital.
Yeah, and I think, just to add to that, like, specifically because of the work that we're going to be doing with Leopardo and part of their analysis, looking at our facilities and looking at some of the deferred maintenance that has occurred in those facilities, the amount of money that we are going to be spending, and it's not sort of budgeted funds in the same way that our capital projects tend to be, but the amount of money that we'll be spending on our facilities, both in the energy efficiency improvements, but more specifically in the structural improvements, once we get to that point, we'll be in a better place to estimate the ongoing, like, carrying costs of a building, for instance, and scheduling out maintenance for the roof, you know, tuck pointing, you know, those sorts of things that should be ongoing expenses and not necessarily capital expenses, but maintenance expenses. And that's sort of a different question than the capital. The problem that we are dealing with right now is that we cannot rely on historic, you know, average expenditure on building maintenance, for instance, because we spend so much time not maintaining these buildings, and it's the same when it comes to our vehicles and equipment. We literally had police officers driving in cars where the floor of the car broke and you could see the ground underneath. Like, this is something that this, you know, organization has endured, and so, we're sort of getting back on track. But what that means is that right now, what we're doing is sort of an accelerated capital expenditure when it comes to, say, the police fleet, for instance, getting rid of old Crown Victorias that we shouldn't be driving in anymore and replacing them because for a lot of these officers, that's their office. You know, they're in those cars, you know, sometimes, what is it, a 12-hour shift we're talking about? That's their work environment, and so, it does need to be, you know, of a quality that we would have for a city like Cleveland Heights, and so, we're sort of playing catch-up right now, and we don't have any historical averages that we can take a look at in order to really inform what that would mean for ongoing maintenance of a fleet that is more appropriate. But that's something that we will be looking at, both in terms of the sustainability questions and the fleet maintenance questions, as we continue this process of turning that fleet over. Or, once we've done those capital projects on those buildings, we'll have a better idea, you know, after the work is done, what will be needed to maintain them. Right now, we don't know.
So, the total overall budget is $98.3 million. The only increase that we see is personal services at $5.8 million compared to the 2024 budget. We are requesting 15 additional employees. The union raises and the healthcare cost, even though they're not increasing for the 2025 year, they increased by 8% in the 2024 year, and we only budgeted a 4% increase. So, I had to do another additional 4% in the 2025 budget.
I'm sorry, what was the increase in healthcare?
8%. 8%.
From 2024?
Yep, and then no increase for the 2025 year. And then the other than personnel services, you'll see a decrease of 11.3. That includes that $15 million placeholder in the ARPA funds that we talked about yet last night. And then the capital is the $28.9 million decrease or an 86% decrease. And then the operating transfers out, I did not budget anything in the 2025 year. The 592 will be done in 2024. And anything else will come at the end of the year and do the transfer out and not budget it in the 2025 year.
And that's because we won't know what that is until that point if we need to transfer out from general fund into other funds in order to make sure that every fund ends the year solvent, basically.
Does the personal services amount, does it account for any cost of living or other salary adjustments for the non-union employees for next year?
We did bake in a 3%, I believe, cost of living adjustment. And we are anticipating some other increases for non-collective bargaining unit employees in the city based on the salary study that we are just now completing. And, but that's something that we'll have to present to council for council's approval if we're going to make any changes in the salary ranges and the wage and salary ordinance before we would make any changes in, obviously, in the actual wages of the employees. That will be coming soon.
Yes, is it normal that the non-bargaining employees get the same increase that the bargaining unit employees get every year? Or is it a different strategy?
Well, I don't know that we can even talk about normal, and I'll tell you why. So since 2008, basically, the city has been on a particular trajectory. And the city manager that directly preceded our last city manager, Tanisha Brierley, was brought on in order to right a ship, basically, from a budgetary standpoint. And I think she took that very seriously. And so when she got here, I believe it might have been 2012 or 2013, and part of her mission and what we saw in budgets moving forward, sort of an austerity mindset. We need to cut, we need to rebuild our reserve, we need to... And so not only did bargaining units, I think, go without certain increases over that time because they were, you know, being a part of the team, sort of recognizing that we had this overarching budgetary problem, but non-bargaining unit employees also spent time not getting this kind of increase. And, you know, that's another thing that we, I think, have had to correct for and are continuing to have to correct for, which is why we're doing this salary study now to make sure that we're keeping up with the market, that we're keeping up with what is a reasonable wage for the work that's being done in any particular position. So I don't know that we can, again, same with our capital and sort of maintenance costs. We can't rely necessarily on previous experience here in the government because we're moving in a new direction now. And the previous direction was born out of budgetary necessity, but now we've got operational necessity that we need to pay attention to, and we've got, you know, sufficient funds to address many of these issues. It's just we have to do it in a strategic way. So I think, but generally, you would expect that, you know, whether or not you're in a collective bargaining unit, we respect the work you're doing. And so we want to make sure that we're keeping up with cost of living increases and that we're providing our employees with, you know, a wage that reflects that respect. So I think we generally want to, you know, provide increases in an ongoing way, especially when it comes to cost of living. But additionally, when it comes to sort of a larger, more strategic increase, then we take a look at the wage and salary ordinance. Because with the non-bargaining unit employees, we don't have the process of negotiation to come to an agreed-upon set of wages.
Yeah, and the only reason I ask, because it's a norm that in a lot of organizations that whatever yearly increases that bargaining unit members get, the non-bargaining units get as well. So that's why I wanted to know what we do here in the city. Thank you.
So the general fund is the main operating fund for the city. This year, we are budgeting revenues at $59.5 million. It's a 6% increase from the 2024 budgeted revenues. The general fund 2025 budgeted expenses is $60.6 million, an 8% increase from the 2024 budgeted expenses. So for the 2025 budgeted revenues, we are showing a 6% increase from the 2024 budgeted revenues. The highest percentage is the municipal income tax that we collect. It's at 62% of the total general fund revenues, and we are slated to go up just 1.3%. The second largest revenue source is the property taxes. It's increasing by 18% or $2.5 million. And then the interest revenue is the third largest revenue source at 5%. And we are estimating that it's going to go up $751,000 or 33%. And we do show a decrease in the fees, license, and permits. As we talked about, this is the building permits. It's showing a decrease of $623,000. I do believe that's very conservative. I do think that we won't be at that big a decrease next year.
Some of that depends on the development work that occurs in the city. If more development work starts, whether that's residential or larger-scale improvements to properties, we may see more of that when it comes to permitting fees and those sorts of things.
So this slide shows the 2025 general fund revenue by revenue class. As I mentioned, the municipal income tax is 62% of the estimated revenues, 18% for the property taxes, and then the interest revenue is at 5%. For the 2025 budgeted expenses, this year, we're budgeting at $60.5 million, and last year was at 55.9. It's a $4.6 million increase or an 8% increase from last year. The biggest increase is the personal services at 4.7% or 11.5%. So the increase is for the union contracts that we negotiated for police and fire, the COLA, and the hospitalization. And then the, I think the general fund is 10, we're doing 10 employees. We're asking for 10 additional employees in the general fund. So out of the expenses, 75% of the budgeted expenses is personnel services, and then the other than personal services is 24%.
How could capital be 1% if it's $4 million?
Well, the capital in 402 is not general fund capital. The, yeah, so we're doing some operating transfers out and have done, you know, transfers from the general fund into the finance capital fund 402. But the fund 402 is separate from the general fund.
Got it. Okay.
This slide shows the full-time budgeted employees in the 2025 year. The increases that we're asking for is one employee in the finance department, two in the planning, one in the public works, seven in the fire, and three in parks and recreation.
We are adding to the number, and there are a variety of reasons for that. And we'll discuss this more in depth when the chief is here to discuss his budget. But just as sort of a preliminary explanation, there are a couple of different reasons. One of those reasons is that the union contract that we signed decreases the work hours, the work week of fire. And so what that means, when you decrease the work week, I think we went from, what was it, 50 to 48 or somewhere around there?
Yeah, it's 100 for every two weeks, 96 for two hours a week.
So what that means is that you need, in order to fill the gap of the reduced work week, you need to make sure that those remaining hours are staffed. And for that, if you're trying to keep a certain staffing level, you need to add employees in order to maintain your expected minimum staffing. So that's one reason. The second reason is more foundational and sort of how things have changed a bit over the years. What we've seen over the past, I don't know, over a decade, actually much over a decade, maybe 20, 30 years almost, we've seen increases in run volumes. And what that means is, you know, how often a squad is dispatched to go address an emergency. Obviously, there are fires, but, you know, the vast majority of the runs are medical emergencies. You hope that there are emergencies that require an ambulance. Sometimes they're not. But the run volumes have dramatically increased over the years while the staffing has not. In some cases, in some years, it's decreased. And so we are working with smaller, you know, shifts, basically, than we used to. For smaller runs, we had more people. And so in order to prevent things like burnout among firefighters and paramedics, we'd like to sort of start moving back toward a more appropriately-staffed shift level, just so we're not, you know, overburdening each of the firefighters. Because that can lead to increased overtime, it can lead to, and that resulting from people getting injured and those sorts of things, which can increase when you have lower staffing.
So here, this is a tangential question, but I still want to ask it. If, I know when you go to the emergency room, they'll check a box if it is an emergency, and if it's not an emergency, they check another box. What, do we pay for that regardless? When I say we, I mean the city pays regardless of whether it's an emergency or not?
So we do have the ability to charge for ambulance runs and that kind of thing. Often, those charges are sent. Sometimes they're waived if somebody has some sort of need, you know, a financial need or something like that. Those fees can be waived. We are also, I think, capable of, and I don't think that we've pursued it, of charging for or providing some sort of penalty for people who habitually use the ambulance service for non-emergency calls. And that's something that we're taking a look at now. We don't, again, we know that healthcare in this country is not done in a way that, you know, is the most beneficial or the least costly. And so we are sensitive to people who don't necessarily feel that they can go to a doctor and have concerns about that, either from a financial or other standpoint. And so we don't want to just completely pull the rug out from, under people that maybe need a bit more of a gradual shift to using a more effective method for healthcare. You know, like the urgent cares that are cropping up all around. We see one on Cedar Fairmount now. You know, influencing people to make use of those will be an important thing that we all do. At the same time, whether or not we're providing a penalty for sort of frivolous use of ambulance services, if we do add that penalty, that will still be something that will have to take time to take effect, and that does not mean that run volumes come down substantially. And so we still need, I believe, the additional personnel in fire in order to deal with the decreased work week and the issues that may crop up there in terms of staffing, and also this continual increase in run volumes. Even if we decreased run volumes at this point by some dramatic, 15% right now, we'd still be well above historic run volumes. And that does have an impact on the people who fight our fires and take us to the emergency room when we need it.
And looking at the chart, and by my math, we're only adding 14 positions. 15?
Yeah, and that, no, the 2024 isn't. That should be 420, sorry. And then it's 435.
I'm sorry, 2024 should be 420?
Yeah.
And then?
And then, how many of these budgeted positions for 2024 have not been filled this year or for most of the year went unfilled?
That is a good question. I don't think I have an answer for you off the top of my head. Let me...
Before we're done with all the budget process, if you could get us that information as well as a rough approximation of the savings to the budget from having these budgeted positions that were not filled?
Yes, I'm glad to see adding staff to, as we say, take care of the city in a more realistic manner. I'm excited to see you're adding a person in finance, so I'd like to know what that person's job duties are going to be, and also the total parks and rec, adding three. Are any of those folks going to be increasing for maintenance or just general around-the-city benches and cleanliness and everything, so?
So I'll start with the finance position. One of the things that we've found in sort of our exploration of how best to incorporate in a more comprehensive way what are actually the requirements of both state law, our internal, you know, city law and policies around contracting and procurement. One of the things that we realized is that having a position that can, you know, specifically address those procurement issues which may deviate from normal processes and have a more hands-on approach to work with the department in a more hand-holdy approach will save us a lot of time and hopefully get payments out much quicker
Thank you.
for vendors. Because one of the things that we know is that, you know, we've got purchase orders from all throughout the organization. we've got purchase orders from all throughout the organization coming, funneling into finance. And, you know, there's only so much capacity in finance to deal with all of those. And many of those purchase orders and contracts are completely normal, no worries. Everything's going the way that it should. And then there are others which require a bit more time and attention, other departments that may require a bit more time and attention because the level of understanding of the processes is variable, and that's something else we're working on now. And this position will assist with that by taking those more troublesome procurement processes sort of out of the regular stream and working directly with that department or division to make sure that they've got all of the paperwork that's necessary and that they've dotted all their i's and crossed all their t's before putting it back through the system corrected. But without interrupting the work that our procurement person, that's currently in finance, without interrupting the work that they're doing to get all of the normal, run-of-the-mill procurement through in a timely fashion. That's what that, in part, that's what that position is intended to do, to be a little bit more hands-on with the departments and divisions in making sure that not only are they following the procedures that we have in place for procurement and contracting, but that when odd situations show up in contracting, that there's somebody in finance who can sort of break off and help them address those specific issues. And also, while doing that, continue with a training exercise for that department to make sure that they know exactly what they need to do to go through a contracting or procurement process the right way.
And parks and rec?
Oh, yeah. Parks and recreation, I think, you're going to have to remind me. Admin assistants, right. So for parks and recreation, so far, we have looked at a recreation specialist that was suggested by the new director. Now, this recreation specialist is somebody who would assist each of our supervisors who deal with a different part of parks and recreation. So we've got general recreation, we've got sports programs, we've got community center, we've got, you know, with the fitness center, we've got ice and aquatics, the senior center, we've got, you know, those, all of these disparate functions of parks and recreation. The recreation specialist is somebody who will be cross-trained, working in department administration, to be able to assist if somebody is sick, is away on leave, is, you know, something like on vacation. Will be able to step in so we don't have any breaks in any of the programming that we have. Some of the difficulty that we've had is when you have turnover even. If somebody leaves, you want to have somebody who can step in and take on some of that, the task that that person was engaged in until you can find a replacement as well. So that was suggested by the new director, so we're going to pursue that. And then the other piece is that there were, I believe, two administrative assistants who were part-time or were converting to full-time. I'm trying to remember if I'm getting confused with. Oh, this is, oh, this is the additional, okay. Oh, sorry, sorry. The admin assistant was a separate issue. Okay. So we've got, in addition to all of the work that we're doing with ARPA on Kane Park, one of the things that we're hoping to do is add a couple of full-time personnel so that we can start moving this to be a more year-round operation. Right now, I believe, historically at least, the only real year-round, full-time position was the general manager.
And the production manager.
The production manager? That was the new one. I mean, but before we created that position, it was a part-time seasonal, at least, but it might have been part-time position that was an assistant to the general manager. But we're trying to professionalize this venue. And so we're hoping to add to what we currently have, the two full-time positions that we have already, our production manager and general manager. What we're looking to add to make this a more attractive venue and to make it more visible to potential concert-goers is a dedicated public relations personnel. And the fourth one is, remind me, because I'm, I'm... We'll get into more detail about this when we get into that, but... We're sort of starting off slow. The initial conversations included several other full-time, year-round positions. It was an operations manager.
It was.
So an operations manager to deal with things like concessions and, at least in the interim, to be the point person on the Arts Fest. And those sorts of events as well. That operations manager will deal with the operations of the venue. The production manager that we currently have in our, in our, like, 2024 budget deals with the specific productions that take place at the park. The general manager, of course, oversees the whole Kane Park organization. And then this proposed public relations person would be that dedicated person who, on a year-round basis, as opposed to just during the season, promotes Kane Park both to artists and to the public to make sure that people know that this is a place that they can come to, you know, enjoy a variety of entertainment options. And we believe that it's important to have this be a year-round, full-time position because I think that we've missed out on concert-goers, on acts that might want to come to Kane Park because we haven't been doing that PR work in the offseason. And when you hire somebody or dedicate somebody to do that public relations work for this venue when the season starts, if you build up your capacity when the season starts, then you are already behind. So that was the proposal from Kane Park staff to continue this process of professionalizing that venue.
Yes. For the parks and rec, are any of these new positions are going to be directed towards the senior center? I know with Danisha leaving, they've been asking for some staff over there. So is there any intentions of hiring anyone over there of any of these three?
No, that, actually, that is already budgeted. So that's not additional positions that we'd be filling. That's 2024 budget that we're trying to fill vacancies for. And so that's not necessarily an additional, but we will be, I think, we have positions that they haven't filled. And that, so we, but we budgeted for those positions. They just didn't actually fill the positions that were budgeted.
How many we have designated for the senior center?
In senior center, I feel like it's three or four.
I think it's four.
Yeah. And so, yeah, those weren't filled. The process for requisitioning job postings and so on and so forth wasn't completed. So we're working on that now. But those aren't new positions. And to get back to Councilwoman Larson's, Councilor Larson's question about sort of the maintenance of the parks and adding staff to maintain those parks, we had been talking and thinking about that. I wanted to spend some more time with the new director. And once he has more of this department, you know, is up to speed on more of the department and the staffing of the department, and once we've had some conversation and worked through a plan for transferring Public Properties Division from Parks and Recreation into Public Works, we wanted to have a longer conversation about what the new director's needs are as he sees them. Because I've got thoughts that I'm, you know, I'm willing to have open conversation about. I think, you know, having dedicated groundskeepers for each park might make sense. Or if that's not enough work for one person, maybe a couple of different parks have a groundskeeper that is dedicated to that particular, you know, asset. You know, I've had some talks about, and I believe Councilman Maddox mentioned this, the possibility of park rangers that are not law enforcement, they're not peace officers, but they would fulfill sort of a security and, you know, oversight function within the parks, running through the parks on a regular basis to make sure things are going smoothly, those sorts of things. But I wanted to make sure that I involve the new director in any of those discussions about how we're changing the nature of the positions in that department.
I just have two quick questions. The Maintenance and Repair Projects Fund for 2024 has $147,000 in it. Is it likely that we'll be able to purchase these chairs? New chairs for the executive conference room and this, and the chambers? And the other question is, are you considering putting any funds towards moving the salt barn and lawn debris, lawn debris out of the Noble Triangle?
So, the salt dome, we don't have a space for, or salt... Barn, I guess, is an appropriate term to use. The dairy, obviously, will be coming down. And along with that, we'll be doing some earth-moving and some landscaping in order to shield from the Warrensville Center roadside. We may be able to do some of that landscaping on the other side as well to shield it from the Noble side in terms of visually, you know, changing the view into that parcel. Until we have a new place to put those things, operational necessity requires that we have somewhere to stage those before we ship them out. And salt is the same situation. Now, I personally, and I know I'm not the only opinion in the city, I personally don't have a huge problem with the way that the structure that holds the salt looks. I mean, it's a white tent, you know, you could be having a wedding in there. I, however, have also seen some really fantastic examples of salt storage, namely, in New York City, they have one that is exquisitely designed in a way that I think that we probably won't in Cleveland Heights because of the expense. But there are options for changing what that looks like and making it a better-designed and more aesthetically-pleasing structure to fulfill the same function. So we don't necessarily, we don't have a plan right now. One of the things that I'm interested in, at least pursuing in terms of conversation, is the possibility of including in the conversation about how we redevelop Severance, you know, some potential for a municipal complex that, you know, might improve this building or replace this building in the court and the police station and possibly add additional capacity space-wise for other functions of the government as well in hopefully a way that isn't too disruptive.
Not to be disrespectful, I'm sorry, Mayor, but I also want, you know, we look at for economic development in that triangle. And the salt dome, or whatever you want to call it, and the lawn debris being there for a while, it sounds like, is discouraging. So I just wanted to get that off, out of my mouth.
Well, I'll tell you, and, you know, I think, that's a good point. And we know, and it's one of our priorities at this point, you know that there's the Noble Road Corridor study going on. And it's not just about the road, obviously. It's about each of the business districts that are along that road as well. And the business district at Mayfield in Warrensville and the Warrensville Triangle are important pieces of that work that we're doing. We have vacant land on the other side of Noble as well. A large parcel of vacant land that has sat unoccupied for quite a while. It is our intention to market that land, and we're actually doing that now, but to more aggressively market that land and the Noble Triangle land that we control for economic development or other development, you know, options. And one of the things that I learned from my Mayor's Institute on City Design process was that maybe we don't need to determine in advance the location before engaging with developers because maybe one of the things that we want the developer to do is provide an alternative. And so that's something that we're looking at as well. We're just, you know, dealing with the variety of other development projects and still being in the planning stages of the Noble Road Corridor study is something we're trying to get through a bit of that before sort of more aggressively marketing and trying to determine what businesses or what development can go there and be successful. But it is definitely on our radar, so don't worry. We, that's one of my plans. So I'm definitely on board with you on that.
Mr. President, just to continue along this line of conversation, this is something that we've had this conversation with countless times, with the council, when I was chairing Planning and Development. It's not just moving it, it's where. I've driven through this entire community. It has to go someplace else. Like I said, I've lived on Noble, so I recognize what that looks like. But you're going to drop it into another neighborhood or another space. We have to be strategic about it. So as we're having these conversations, I just want to make it clear to the public that no one is just sitting there and just deciding not to move this. We have to be strategic about where to move it and the impact it's going to have and wherever we place it as well. We've even discussed looking at other municipalities and possibly working along those lines and the expense of that and the sizing and how it's just not feasible. And so I want to make it clear, these are conversations that we've had ad nauseam on this council. This isn't a new conversation about the salt dome. I just want to make that clear, that if we're going to continue to ask, let's all come up and have discussions about the solution, but it's not as simple as just moving it someplace else. And this is something that we've talked about over the last several years now, that this is an issue that we're all recognizing. But at this point, we need to think strategically about what that would do, where it would go, and what that would look like. And we need to look at it holistically, not just because we're frustrated about where it currently is, but we need to have a strategic look long-term about where this needs to go and what that impact is. Not just getting it out of Noble, but where else are you going to put it, where you're going to place that? And so I just want to make sure that we're looking at this holistically with the administration, and we're not just asking when, but where, and the how is just as critical. And those are things that I think that maybe the council can partner with on, but we've got to look at it from that view. Thank you.
I don't know if I heard your answer, Mayor, about Councilman, yeah, Larson's about chairs.
So we're working through sort of, at least on the initial side. The chairs are one piece of this. But clearly, there's additional work that needs to be done. But yeah, we're working on sourcing chairs currently. So that's sort of a 2024 project that we're still working to complete.
I, thank you, because you know, our residents and everybody who come here talks about the chairs. And we are actually talking about chairs. So I just wanted to make sure I heard that answer. Thank you.
Mr. President? Really glad that yesterday we made the budget adjustments, that the lead testers could get paid. Are there any other, like, contractors or vendors who are owed, like, $30,000, $40,000 or more? Or are we caught up on things?
I believe so, but, you know, I, that's a, day by day, I'd have to maybe sort out if there are any problems that I'm not aware of.
Okay, so we're, to our knowledge, we think that everyone who's owed money has been paid after the budget adjustment. Okay. Good.
Right. They haven't been paid yet. But we did the budget adjustment, yes.
Well, thank you. That's...
Overall budget?
Yeah. In a nutshell.
In a nutshell.
All right, so the next item on our list is the mayor's office. Or are we going to do the finance office? Okay. The finance department. Yeah, if you turn the page, it's, no, that, it's the other one. Oh, there it is, yeah.
This part, yeah. Pass. Yeah.
You. All right, very good, thanks.
So, for the finance department's budget, we saw a lot of changes this year. A couple of accomplishments that we did for the 2024 year is that we were part of the ARPA team to help get all the ARPA allocations and projects encumbered by the end of the year. The HR department revamped the new hiring orientation process and the onboarding. We also completed a new employee benefit guide for the 2024 year, and Human Resources also spearheaded the salary wage study that you guys will be getting soon. Some of the goals for 2025 will be the implementation of the ADP system to help streamline payroll. They want us to go live at the beginning of January, I think we're going to push it off till February, because January, even though it slows down for everybody else in the city, the finance department is wrapping up the year, and we also have to get W2s and 1099s out. So, for, so far, the 2025 finance budget, I'm requesting $5.4 million. That is $1 million in personal services and 4.4 increase in OTPS. The increase for the other professional services, about $1.1 million, is for the income, the property taxes on the top of the hill. And then, I am requesting that new finance person that the mayor talked about, the financial analyst liaison, and that will cost us $90,000 about. Got it for the finance budget, we're not fun. No capital.
Okay, I see. All right, any questions? Yeah, please.
The new timekeeping system, is it going to be, are you using fingerprint already for check-in and checkout when they punch, or will that be a part of that system, or what will the system look like, different from what it is now?
So, there's two different systems. The ADP is for the payroll processing, and then I saw this for the timekeeping, so the timekeeping is the IT department. So, I don't punch into, I don't know.
Okay.
There's a lot of time clocks, but I don't know how they're going to do it.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you, too.
Mr. President? No, go ahead. Councilman Cobb sent an email asking if we could get some of the expense worksheets. Is it possible to receive those at some point so that we can get more color into the OTPS lines?
Yeah, so, I was mistaken, so if you look at the back of the book, I only did your guys' because when I read the email and everything else, I only did for council, but if you want additional department, I'd be happy to provide it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was my question. Oh, okay. Yael, did you have a question? Okay. Any other questions? Very good. Thank you. We're dealing with a smaller total budget than, than 2024, but a slightly increased budget when it comes to personal services. Now, we're going from sort of a 2024 adopted budget of six, but I, I believe that was because we transferred a position from technically being in the finance department into the mayor's office, and that was the organizational performance coordinator position. So, in 2025, we will be working with the mayor, city administrator, an executive assistant, special assistant, the sustainability coordinator, the mayor's action center coordinator, and the organizational performance coordinator, just as we are right now. Is that, Mayor, is that performance, I'm sorry, what's the name of the title? Performance coordinator. Performance coordinator. Is that, like, is there a sunset on that? Is that person just here to kind of straighten things out and then go, or? No, 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 no. Okay. This is, this is an ongoing initiative, and this is something that I think is, you know, there's going to be a lot of work on, on the front end, but I, I believe that this is a position that will have to be maintained in order to maintain the expected and hoped-for culture shift toward continuous improvement in, in city government. So, like I said, there's a lot of work on the front end because, you know, a whole bunch of ad hoc processes, you know, are currently being followed in variable ways throughout the organization, standardizing those things, creating, you know, SOPs that are recognized throughout the organization, training people on those things, and training people on sort of both culturally and functionally, on how we systematize process improvement and continuous improvement in, in the work that we do, is, is an ongoing project. That's something that doesn't stop, we don't, you know, get to the point where we say, okay, well, now we're all better, and then somebody can move on. There's always opportunity for improvement, and so, this, this position will be, as far as I'm concerned, an ongoing position that will help to shepherd the organization toward, you know, continual improvement in all of those processes. So, could this person double as a city administrator? I don't believe so. I, I, you know, I, I think that there is something to be said, or to some degree, separating, you know, the, the building the plane and the flying the plane. You know, in an organization like ours, you know, one of my former bosses used to say, you know, we're, we're flying, we're building the plane as we're flying it, you know, or we're painting the moving train, you know, because things are happening constantly and you have to take care of, you know, all of the things that are currently ongoing. This is the same issue that we have potentially in Public Works, where you want to sort of separate out the larger capital projects work from the operations work. And, and so, it's a similar concept in that it is very, very difficult to focus in a really meaningful, comprehensive way on finding those places for improvement while you're also trying to manage keeping the trains moving on time.
Mr. President? Oh. Just to add to that, across organizations, not just government entities, but even corporations, you always separate your leadership and your execution from your process improvement, and the reason is that is because you want to make sure that they can always keep that, that step back and have that high overview and that, that level. If, if you combine the two, you typically won't even see a leader that typically carries both of those, those really skill sets. It takes one to manage the people and lead the people, and another to really look at that process and process improvement, so you typically always have a process improvement specialist or someone in part of that leadership team helping to drive those changes, and then you have the rest of the leadership team really executing those changes and developing it, and so, the, the way they've set it up is, is pretty typical of how you see organizations do process improvement and, and set up a specialist for that.
My, my original thought for that position, you know, as I conceived it, was in the finance department. Yeah, I was, I was thinking about sort of building out a, a budget and management concept, but I think, and, and this is why we made the shift, I think that making sure that changes are actually implemented and that, you know, an eye toward process improvement, an eye toward standardization and decrease in defects is taken seriously throughout the organization. I thought that it made more sense to have it housed in the mayor's office and sort of carry the weight of the mayor's office with it. And so, that's, that's something that, that we're working through now, but I, I don't know if you, when you walked in, if you saw sort of some of the process mapping that we're doing right now, we've got some things up in the atrium, looking at procurement processes, it's sort of an example of some of the work that we're trying to do to standardize and educate and bring people on board with changes that'll increase our efficiency and decrease the amount of defects that we have in our work.
Have you considered funding for an additional staff member to assist Coordinator Boateng in implementing the climate resilience plan? There'll be a lot of data analysis that will have to be done, and general project completion, those kinds of reporting elements, so have you thought about adding another person for that particular section?
I have not yet. This is obviously, you know, if need is presented to me, I'm, I'm willing to take it seriously, so I can have a conversation with, with Dr. Boateng and, and sort out sort of what capacity he needs or what cooperation he needs from departments in order to make sure that we're moving toward the goal that we've set for ourselves.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions for the mayor? Excuse me. All right, thank you, Mayor. Is it okay with everybody if we take a, like a five-minute recess? Is that okay? Yeah. So, what do we got here? Yeah, how about if we reconvene at 11:30? Is that okay? And just for the public that's watching, let me see what's next. So, we have the municipal court next. 11:38, and the next item is council budget. Before we do that, I just want a couple of housekeeping things. Just for context for anybody listening, we were unable to get a lot of this information ahead of time, so, just so you know, we're, these are basically presentations right now. We'll be asking, you know, as we get these materials, we'll be studying them and asking probably more specific questions as we meet in December, which is the time we'll be voting on the budget. The mayor and I have agreed that the department directors will be here to answer our questions, so I would encourage everybody, you know, obviously, after today and after this week, as we get the materials right before we meet, you know, study them, and, and if you come up with more questions, again, the directors will be at our disposal. So, the next, the next item is the council budget, and you can see that last year, we budgeted $74,445, but we only spent $18,358.93. There are some increases in the budget for 2025, as you can see, and I certainly look at any questions that any council members have.
Mr. President?
Please.
Director Schuster, maybe just a general question. So, before this meeting, Addie shared with us a worksheet that showed the budgeted amount for council for this year that was about 74,000, but it also included actual expenses, which totaled about $18,000. So, that was very helpful for me to see that our actual expenses outside of personnel were significantly lower from what was budgeted. Would it be possible to, and maybe it's not possible, so I guess I'm asking if it's possible, but would it be possible to learn the actual expenses thus far for the other departments, just so that we can see whether we are on track with what was, with the, the adopted budget, whether we're over, under, that sort of thing?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. President, may I also just point out that the one that I did print you guys off was run, it looks like August 29th, just so you know, so it was only through August 29th, so I'm not sure how much has changed since then.
So, when I do the, the detailed expense budget worksheet, so, we're comparing this budget to the adopted budget at the beginning of the year of 2024. So, when this runs through the system, it does a combine, so it takes anything from last year that you used a purchase order to spend this year, and it will do the expenses, so I can provide the amended budget to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, Addie, when you said August 29th, is that when we turn this budget into Director Schuster?
It would have been just after that.
Just after that, okay. You know, I, I know that this legal contractual $40,000, it's, it's very hypothetical, you know, depending on a lot of things, that, you know, council does have the, in the charter, the ability to hire outside legal consultants. We just, you know, haven't had to do that to, to this point, but we did want a budget for it, and obviously, every, anything that doesn't happen goes back into the general fund. Well, I mean, it's, it's an amount we had to choose, given that we had to turn in a preliminary budget to Director Schuster, I guess it was early September, so like two and a half months ago, you know, if that's changed or anybody thinks it's inadequate. I mean, look, this is all up for, this is our budget, we can, we can amend it, actually, we can amend any part of the budget, but this in particular, I would, I would think, you know.
Yeah, we, we had a discussion when we talked about our budget in the committee, the whole, about something called communications, is that going to be included in advertising? Communications from council out to the public?
Yeah, advertising contractual, maybe that's, Addie, can you recall if that's what?
The advertising contractual went down because this is mainly the publishing of our, our ordinances, which you guys just passed a resolution saying that we can publish on our website, so that's why that went down. I would think that if you guys were interested in hiring someone, it would be under the management consultant contract, but that was just my thought.
And, and you know, we did talk about that, and, and the need for that, and it could be, I, as I recall the conversation, it could be a part-time person, it could be, I think we even entertained the idea of somebody that actually works for the administration maybe giving us some time, I mean, we never really asked permission for that, but that, I mean, at least just as a possibility, and I guess we didn't really make a decision as to whether we wanted to do it or not.
If you recall, I had raised the prospect of if, rather than sending out separate communications, why council wasn't part of or participating in the Focus magazine, that the city mails out to all the residents? Because I think that would be a more, you know, cost effective. And in essence, since we are funding this city publication, and traditionally, you know, as council has not been a participant or a part of that publication.
So are you speaking about this as something operational? Or are you saying this could be a role for the person that we might hire, the part-time person we might hire?
If there was a need to hire someone, but I, again, I, I don't want us to have to to fund a separate publication from what the city is already sending out.
Well, let's ask the mayor then. Mayor, if we were to hire somebody that would consult with council on communications, could they have a role in the Focus magazine as a contribution from council?
So I think my position on Focus or really any of the the city's publications has been consistent and clear. Let me know what it is that you think is appropriate to go in that publication, and we can have that conversation. But that's a case by case.
So I guess that kind of leaves us with, if we were to hire somebody, we would have to have some kind of overall strategy as to how we would use them, because we couldn't necessarily count on them being able to do something in particular, in particularly in the Focus magazine. But maybe we'd want to do something on our own. I mean, go ahead.
So am I hearing, Councilman Cobb, am I hearing correctly that you're suggesting that rather than hiring someone, we see whether the city's communication department could assist us with things that we're trying to get out so that we don't, you know, hire someone when the service might be able to be provided by the folks that are already hired by the city?
That's what I'm saying. Why, there shouldn't be a need for council to have to to add an additional expense to the city to be part of a city publication.
Well, it's, you know, as the mayor said, it's a case by case basis. So I would suggest that if any members have anything that they want to put in the Focus, when is the next Focus magazine? I don't even know.
So the next Focus magazine, we anticipate coming out in January.
In January. So we probably, I would take it the deadline's probably pretty soon for the content.
I would say the deadline is probably already passed.
Passed, okay. So maybe we'd be looking at for something for the spring. So I think, I think that would be a good committee of the whole discussion to see what we might want to do and then, you know, make an assignment to the people that are interested in having some contribution. Go ahead.
I know Councilman Maddox had even mentioned at the committee of the whole about maybe even hiring a part-time person, because he had said it before. I think some of us had said it before about having, we talked about a website at first. Then we talked about, what, a council's newsletter or something like that? So that way, we're not bothering the mayor's staff. Why not go with something with hiring a part-time person to do communications for council? So then that way, you don't have a gatekeeper. Council can agree on what goes in, what goes out, and those type of things, but you're not adding that extra burden. I mean, we had talked about that from almost day one.
Yeah, we spoke about that in terms of social media, community engagement, things outside of council operations or meetings, or things that Addie might be doing. I think maybe it might be helpful for council to do some sort of strategic planning meeting around staffing or around our budget and that plan and what that might look like in terms of, again, from a social media, part-time engagement standpoint and what that our needs assessment might be. So I think that maybe council at this point should do a staffing needs assessment to say, hey, this is what we're thinking, and that'll give us a clearer idea of it. But that that was the route that I would have gone.
Yeah.
I mean, we really haven't had that discussion, and we need to. So I would suggest, you know, given what we have for the rest of the year, we'll put that on the January agenda. Okay, any other questions about this budget? And, yeah, please.
So once we discuss it, can we add it to the budget?
Well, if.
I mean, is this, is this totally in brick and stone? Or we can amend it or add to it or?
I mean, we only have $5,000 budgeted for for this right now.
So would you be talking about a 1099 part-time employee? Are you going to have a?
A contractual.
Regular employee, part-time employee?
Well, yeah.
So it all depends.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
No, you can always bring it, what, for the next year and make an amendment to the budget.
Mr. President. Just to provide some background, so with regard to the Community Relations Department, the 2022 actual expenses was about $430,000. That increased in 2023 to about $670,000, and literally a million dollars was budgeted for 2024. So my view is that if we, council, are funding $1 million in community relations for the city, that that really ought to cover our council as well. And that I see the newsletter and the Focus magazine as community resources, as citywide resources, and things that should include content from our council as well. And I just don't see it as a prudent expense to hire additional folks for ourselves when it seems like those are citywide resources that should include content from this council. That's my view.
Just for correction from me, for clarity, I'm not speaking about anyone for communication specifically for Focus magazine. I'm talking about communication for community engagement in general, from phone calls or events to operational support and things like that, not just online or what's going out in the mail, but things that we're doing strategically as a staff. And like I use example, some of the events that we have with awards ceremony, that's a lot for one person. And so I'm thinking something that's that's more structurally sound in terms of operationally and engagement for the staff, not just for comms or the newsletters, but in general things that may be in the community that we're doing, or tables that we're setting up, or times where Addie might need a second set of hands, or there's some major issues that we're trying to function in the city, and we want another point of contact for council, things like that, where we can kind of flesh it out. It wouldn't just be specifically just for comms, but it was that that type of idea, how could we make sure that as a council, we have another point of contact that's not only supporting the work that Addie's doing, but kind of fulfills another part of that role in terms of community engagement, where when we're outside, when we're trying to connect in some, in terms of some of these meetings and keeping us structured and organized, things like that. So not just from a comm side, but from an operational side too, if that helps clarify.
Well, that makes sense. But again, I think it's going to be hard to put a dollar amount. I understand what, you know, you want to know that, I think, I think we should, I think we need to have the discussion about the scope, and then we can figure out what, you know, if it be part-time person or just a contractual thing based on specific events. I certainly understand your point about, you know, funding comms to that degree and then not having a say, but, you know, we fund a lot of administrative functions that we don't necessarily have a particular role and after, after they're funded. So are you, I mean, I think this is a conversation that we need to have with the mayor in particular, because this is kind of a philosophical kind of conversation in a sense.
Additionally, Mr. President, I did want to at least clarify a little bit. We have consolidated.
Mr. Mayor, your mic.
We've consolidated the funding for what is technically the Community Services Department. The, that was funded out of several different pots. There was the Public Relations, and then there was Community Relations, and I believe there was another set of funds as well. In terms of the personnel, though, we've consolidated that. So you may be looking at at something specific to a particular department level, but that department was funded out of multiple different pots in the past. We've sort of consolidated this. So that at least provides some of the, the, the reason for that increase. But additionally, I want to remind everybody that the Community Services Department was at one point much, much larger and had people, for instance, who were neighborhood liaisons who dealt specifically with particular neighborhoods or or blocks that, you know, worked with them. And again, as I mentioned earlier, since 2008 and and sort of that austerity mindset that this government went through, a lot of those positions were cut. I think that one of the things that we're, we've seen over the years is that in general, communications, you know, and and providing information in a more proactive way from the city to the residents, and also finding ways to receive information from the residents has been something that, like many of the other functions, has been lacking and needs to be improved. And you don't really do that. You know, what we used to do, I think, was just contract with a provider of certain services and spent a great deal of money on that and through contractual services, which basically offloaded much of our communications function for some years. And when I got into office, I'd sort of repurposed that to try again to build capacity in-house, which is sort of a theme of of some of the work that we've been doing throughout various departments. And and so working toward building actual capacity in communications or community services, as it is technically called, is something I still think is important. So I don't know if if you think that, you know, the increase is too much. Obviously, council is that budgetary authority, and if you decide to, you could cut that budget, I wouldn't advise it. And and I do also, I recognize council's ability to speak as a separate and independent body and communicate to the public as a separate and independent body when it comes to communications from the city. I think the the charter makes it clear how that kind of communication from the city as an entity is intended to to be expressed. And that's why the administration handles that. I am absolutely open and willing to discuss any pitch that any council member has for a topic, and and we can discuss that. I think that there needs to be flexibility, because any individual council member can propose an inappropriate topic for a city publication. I can't even predict what that might be. But I wouldn't want to simply, you know, open up a city publication for, you know, undetermined, you know, communications that the city as an entity led by a mayor doesn't have some hand in determining. But I do recognize that council can budget for itself, as was discussed, you know, a staff that would allow it to more effectively communicate its positions and priorities if you wanted to.
Mr. President, go ahead. Thank you for that. The IT department provides service for the entire city government, and I suspect that most residents who are well aware of the high taxes that they pay in our city would probably agree that if we are spending $1 million a year on a community services department, that that should also benefit the entire city government. So again, I'm of the the position that I think that that should support our council as well. I have to say that from my own experience, I remember I reached out twice about something regarding the Coventry Peace Campus that I thought would be appropriate to have included in the newsletter, and I just didn't even get a response. And so, you know, we can say that, you know, it's a case by case thing, but based on history, not getting a response, that's not encouraging. So rather than looking at hiring new folks, my preference is that we find a way to better collaborate with the existing team members who we have. Mr. President.
Just to wait, if I, if I could, just to push back a little bit, I do recall there have been occasions where a council member has an event, for instance, or, you know, proposes some sort of communication, and the communications staff do absolutely accommodate when when appropriate. And so I do want to point out, this isn't a situation where communications simply does not provide any service to the council. In fact, right now, communications is broadcasting this meeting as we speak. And and so I do want to push back a little bit on on this idea that the communication staff don't serve the whole government. But I will say this, every piece of the government doesn't necessarily have every message that they want to send included in our newsletters either. So this is something that you should recognize. There, there are reasons, and sometimes strategic reasons, for how we communicate, when we communicate, in part due to what eyes we need these things to be in front of and the recognition that you can oversaturate a particular attention span. And so there are those reasons. There are also reasons of sort of general strategic messaging that can be influenced in a particular newsletter edition or a particular focus issue. But I'll say, the the communications function absolutely does serve the entire government, including the council. Frankly, even if Judge Costello approached us with a thought about what, something that could be included, that would be weighed on a case by case basis as well. And and we're absolutely open to working with the other branches of government, but we also recognize that this is a city government, and the city administration, and the mayor leads that government. And so the Communications Department or Community Services Department needs to take the entire city into account. But again, as I said, in the same way that Judge Costello could hire personnel to achieve certain goals that are specific to the court, if the council, the council is certainly empowered by the charter change that we put on the ballot, I believe, what was it, '22? '22? The council is now empowered to hire staff that can help the council achieve its specific goals as well. If communications are a part of that, council can have that decision.
Go ahead, Paul.
A few things. Number one, I agree with the mayor. I don't want the public to think that comms is just one particular portion of this and it's just a newsletter. Everything that we're seeing right now is coming out of that department. Steve does an amazing job staying here late with us at night and investing in this, and a large portion, portion of what they do, and that we approve in our budget is impacting the work that we do. So I don't, I don't want to confuse anyone by thinking, because we're not putting an article in there somehow, we're not seeing the impact of what we're budgeting. The second thing is, I want to make sure from a, a, a process standpoint, anything that we're putting in the newsletter, it, we should have had a discussion about what processes we would have wanted anyway. They shouldn't be getting things piecemeal for multiple council members. If we're speaking as a body and it's going in the newsletter, that agreement should have come out of this body, and then we submit that request. And so I think that's part of the problem. We, we shouldn't be having an expectation that each of us is just writing stuff and sending it over to comms. There needs to be an agreement about what we're putting in there as we're speaking with one voice in there. And if it's not one voice, it shouldn't be going in there anyway. It's the council who's speaking in that. And so I, I think that we need an internal process before we keep going to the administration, because a lot of the frustration that we have with the administration and the process and communication is because we don't have anything set up on our end in the first place in terms of how we will communicate on our own, how we'll put through a request, even some of the information that we're requesting from the administration. It's all haphazard. I mean, just in the last two meetings from yesterday to today, I've heard, I sent an email requesting this, and I've sent an email requesting that. Imagine getting emails from seven different council members, and those emails are all expected to be a priority before a meeting. That is not a professional way to deal with the administration. Any request that we're putting in should be coming from a unified and organized front on this council. That is a council issue, not an administration problem. So I think that's the first thing we need to talk about, is our own internal processes for any requests that we're going to make to the administration or any communication that we're going to make to the city. The last thing I'll say is this, and I want to make sure that, we recognize that we are absolutely at a budgetary standpoint for this city. However, we have a responsibility to approve this budget. We have the responsibility to fund things that are operating in the city. It is not a, a, a weapon, it is not a hammer, and constantly reminding administrators and the mayor that we can, or what we've done, or what we've given is just absurd. It, it, we've got to stop looking at it from this point of view. This is our job. And so we're, I'm funding a budget not because I'm trying to get a point across. I'm not going to ask them to. I'm not going to ask them to cut a line because I'm in my feelings. I'm doing this because this is our job. So let's, let's remove any, I'm feeling like I'm not being served out of this, so maybe we should discuss cutting this budget or reminding people of what we gave them. We didn't give anything. We are working in a partnership in this government, and this is the taxpayers' dollars. And so I want to make that clear. Sometimes we get a little out of hand in saying, well, hey, we can withhold things. No, you cannot. And if I find out that we're going to cut a budget or any civil service or, or public service because we're in our feelings, I'm going to have some major problems with that. So I just want to make sure that we make it clear that we, we shouldn't be making demands because we approved a budget. I'm not asking to drive a police car, I'm not asking to drive a fire truck, and I approve those budgets. I'm not asking for my own garbage truck because I approve that budget. And so we, we have to make sure that we're, we're thinking clearly about how we're articulating or communicating things, because it's coming off a little as if, because I did this, I should be expecting this, when we have to look at it more holistically about what this budget means and what it's doing for the city. And so I, I just don't think that invites the kind of collaboration that we want. Thank you.
All right. So a couple of things, I'm going to push back a little bit. There are some things that we do as individuals that I think are completely appropriately individual in our communications with the administration. If it were to be something like an article in the Focus magazine, I would agree that, that we should have a discussion and a consensus on what that ought to be with council. That's, to, to me, a little bit different than the example you gave Councilman Petrus about, you know, inquiring about some particular thing. And there's always a kind of a fine line between, you know, rubber stamping a budget and, and giving a critical analysis. And I don't think that, I don't think anybody here has ever said anything other than, you know, they want to take a look at it and scrutinize it and ask questions. And, you know, if, if, if a change was proposed, I would assume it would be for an honorable, honorable reason. And I, and I wouldn't want anybody to be intimidated or discouraged in any way from speaking their mind about a budget item that they believe should be changed or eliminated or added, because that is part of our authority. And, you know, I don't, I just see no problem with that in general. Any other questions about the council budget? Yep.
Wanted to say thank you. It looks like we've included the forty, approximately $4,600 for membership in the National League of Cities.
Yeah, that, that is good. And National League of Cities and Ohio Municipal League, understood that not everybody's going to go, and that, you know, again, that money would just go back into the...
Yes, well, the membership itself is not going to go back in because that's going to be paid out. But any, yes, there's also budgeted for the actual conferences, but anything that's not used would go back. I also did increase the lodging and the meals expenses as well, just due to people that might want to go to that conference.
Is there anything else that people might want to attend or, you know, that's not in the budget? Because, oh, go ahead.
I just want to speak on the National League. I actually went to that conference, the 100-year conference, and you would not believe how many Ohio councilmen attend that. And now they are making moves to take a higher leadership role. While we were there, Richmond Heights councilperson was elected to a regional director for Indiana and Ohio. We have Blaine Griffin, who is the president of council in Cleveland, who actually is over finance. And so Ohio made some tremendous moves at this last convention. We had, it was about almost 10,000 people there, and just five or six or more hotels packed. And the, and I brought all of you all, I hope you got the books I brought back for you all as this kind of a souvenir. Everybody was grabbing them to take them back to the council people who weren't there. But I was disappointed that I was the only one there because of a lot of the other cities, Cleveland, South Euclid, Richmond Heights, the mayor from, he was here for the dog park, Kevin.
Brattonaw.
Yeah, Brattonaw. I mean, it was, it was, it was just, it was really, I can't tell you the education that you learn there versus the Ohio League. And it's so much to offer. You have, you almost need 10 of you, because you need to break up into different classrooms to learn something.
Because there's a lot of stuff at the same time.
A lot of things.
Yeah.
A lot of things. And I think I gave you the agenda as well. So I am so glad that the council decided to pay for the membership. And I hope that maybe the next time, I think the next one is in March, is in Washington, DC. Hopefully, I think, I hope some of the council decides to go. I think you'll find it very rewarding. But I will say, boy, I went and I paid my own way, just sold the residence. No, I didn't ask, I didn't get any money from the city or anything else, but I thought it was worthwhile to attend, to broaden my horizons on civil government.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any other comments or questions, changes to the proposed council budget? Okay, then we'll move on to what would be next, law department or municipal court?
Because I believe we'll do law department, but I did just text the law director to let him know we were slightly early, so.
Okay.
Maybe give him a couple minutes.
Um, did you have another question? Remember, right before the break...
Oh, I was, I was going to ask the mayor. With the mayor's budget, did you all have educational budget? Or is it put, is it added into something else, another line item?
Professional services and...
It's, it's under...
There's resources for, for educational.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yes. Yes, to the, the inclusion of education for...
Is under what line item? Personal?
Other than personal services. It's one of the items in other than personal services, I believe.
Okay.
And if anybody's interested, um, you know, maybe I saw this three years, or almost three years ago now, council members make $9,271, and the council president makes, I didn't even know this until I saw, exactly, I knew it was like around this, $11,841. And then, yeah.
Mr. President, I did, I did want to mention, I know Vice President Russell mentioned, you know, sort of making her way to, to the NLC conference. I, I do want to encourage council members, to the degree that you can, to participate in those sorts of conferences and those sorts of organizations. I believe that they have a legitimate and demonstrable impact on the quality of service that we can provide as electeds. And, and I did want to at least remind all of you that in, in this year's budget, seminars and conferences has been budgeted for and, and, you know, so those sorts of expenses are reasonably for the advancement of the city of Cleveland Heights. And so you shouldn't have to go your own way on that. There is money budgeted in council's budget this year that, that you could have used to, to book that travel, to attend that, that seminar, that conference. So I just wanted to, to remind council that that money is in council's budget.
And the next, um, I mean, not me, yes, but the next League of Cities is March?
March, Washington.
Yeah, in Washington, DC.
Three a year.
Okay. I mean, DC is kind of doable. That might be during blossom time. That'd be a wonderful time to go. I forget exactly when it is. It's either the end of March or beginning of April.
End of March.
Yeah, I mean, the, when the...
No, I was, I don't, I...
Blossom part, not the...
Talking about the blossom, talking about the education.
Well, it's just a nice time to go. All right, so right now, we're waiting for, anything for the good of the order while we're waiting for the law department? I guess we can look at the budget while we're... Yeah, please.
Question, looking at your budget book, mayor, I'm looking at the 2025 all-fund summary expense budget comparison. Looking at the line, that item that's called public building maintenance...
What page are you on?
I'm on page 10.
Okay.
Might be your page number also, not sure.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. When you look at that public building maintenance, we budgeted in 200, 200,024, and then we reduced it to 100,025. Is there a reason for doing that when we've got so many maintenance issues?
Yes. So the, the substantive reason for that reduction is that this is primarily for outside maintenance, repair work that needs to be done, not large capital project, like improvements on, to our facilities. So this would be, you know, the, the door over at the fire station gets stuck, and we need somebody to come out and repair that and, and get that open again so we can get, you know, fire trucks out. You know, those sorts of repair issues, the, some of that money has been used to, over time, to patch things that we should have been, you know, working through a larger capital project to really repair. Like, you know, you can patch a roof over and over and over again. You know, we don't want this to turn into, you know, what is it, the ship of Theseus, you know, where we're replacing every piece until it's a whole new roof. We'd prefer to put a new roof on the fire station or, and that's part of the work that we're doing, again, with Leopardo, some of this, like the maintenance to our service garage. It's in, you know, dramatic need for, for, for repair, for, for capital improvement. And so that is going to address some of those needs. And so we can relegate that money that's in that line to those ongoing outside contractual repairs that hopefully we will need, you know, less of because we're not patching in order to stay ahead of the capital improvements that we actually needed to do.
Thank you.
I don't know if, if the director has more to say on that, but...
Also, that fund doesn't have a revenue source, so that's funded by the general fund also. So it depends on where our year-end balances end up in the general fund, how much money will move over.
And it's one of those circumstances where, as a general fund, you know, funded function, we can, if we see a need for additional, we will, you know, when we see the need, we do come back and, and we say, hey, we're running low on this, and this is why, you know, the repairs we, we estimated are not necessarily, you know, accurate and will need a little bit more. So we will absolutely come back to council if we see the need.
Mr. President? Yes. Just above that line, for street construction, maintenance, and repair, it looks like there's a 45% decrease from about 4.9 million to 2.7 million. Could we hear some context for that change? On page 10, it is one, it is the second line on page 10. Okay. Okay.
Well, I remember last year, Director Klingescale had everything line itemed. I mean, including which streets were going to be repaved, and I think it was pretty granular.
We'll make sure that the director's prepared to, to speak to that.
Big night tonight.
Pretty impressive.
Big night.
As of what they've done.
They've taken...
I think...
They can take on the Celtics.
Should, should take some of the credit for their run. Yeah.
In what way?
Karma. Their, their, their head coach is, is, is really knocking it out of the park.
Yeah.
I think it's because, you know, the, the great city that, that he lives in.
I mean, it is incredible. I didn't even know he lived here. Oh, hey! It's great. It's awesome.
Does he live in Cleveland Heights?
Evidently. I just, I didn't know until just now.
We're looking at your budget as you get yourself oriented.
Nice to see you again, by the way.
Would you like to make some kind of opening statement about the budget and any, maybe more granular explanation of anything that's there?
I would, I would say only, Mr. President, thank you, that I think that the, I have some additional details to work through yet with, with finance in the mayor's office, but the increase in personnel, personnel services is obviously the biggest increase over time, slight increase from 24 to 25. My sense is, although I don't have figures, that we're going to be below our 2024 budget, potentially fairly substantially because of staffing issues, but we are in the process of staffing. We have an add-up now for an assistant director of law, and my hope is that we'll get candidates that will allow us to hire two assistant directors, to use our capabilities and support the city and council better.
So is, if I could, I saw that the actual budget, well, that's for 2023. So do you, do you know what the actual, where you're headed with the actual budget for this year? I see with the adopted budget.
I don't have...
I'm sorry, for 2024 is what I meant.
Yeah, I don't have that.
So Director Schuster, maybe you could add that to the list?
Mr. President, if I might, we did increase by one full-time lawyer from 23 to 24, but then the last third of the year, we're down a lawyer as well. So we'll be slightly over 23 is my sense for 24.
All right. Any questions for, oh, go ahead, Councilman Cobb.
So the total breakdown of, of your complement when it's fully staffed, how many attorneys versus support staff when, when you're fully staffed?
Well, fully staffed right now is indicated as eight people, so that would be six lawyers and the two paralegals. We currently have five lawyers, four full-time and one part-time, and two paralegals.
And so the position that you're posting right now, will that add to that current complement? You're down one or, okay.
Yeah.
And I know that we've talked about having a lawyer to meet the increased demands from council. Is that, you know, part of, you're looking to expand from a part-time to a full-time?
Yes. Yeah. And, and potentially, so again, we're down currently a part-time lawyer. It was almost full-time, 80%. So we want to replace that position with a full-time person. And if the right candidates are out there, we'd like to bring on an, an additional full-time person based upon the needs that we've observed from council, but also from the city generally over the last 18 to 24 months.
Okay, I guess that's it. Nobody else has any extra questions?
Okay.
Additional questions?
Very good. On that note, thank you. On that note, thank you.
Evidently, you're busy anyway, so, you know.
I'll find something to do.
Yeah, right.
I think we were just happy to know that you were going to hire some more people.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, and we'll see you Friday.
Thank you.
And then we're going to hopefully get Judge Costello and your future council, council vice president, do you need to exit? I completely understand, everybody else can stay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Okay. Yeah, so, Steve, we're going to take a little break here until the judge shows up, and we'll reconvene, hopefully in the next five, 10 minutes. Okay, welcome back to our special committee of the whole meeting. We're discussing the budget. Unfortunately, Judge Costello was not able to join us for the municipal court budget, but interim director Tara Schuster's here to go over the numbers with us.
For the 2025 Muni Court that is here today, this is only the general fund, none of his court funds. So for the general fund, he is requesting $1.8 million. It's an increase from the 1.7 from the 2024 request that was adopted. The increase is for personnel services, it's 1.6 compared to the 1.5 last year. And basically, the only increase to the personnel was for healthcare workers comp and the COLA adjustment. There was no additional employees asked, there was nothing else there. And then for the OTPS, it's a $10,000 increase for 2025.
Well, last year, I believe, the court added a liaison for, oh, I'm going to think of it, housing, yeah, but what was the position? Yeah, yeah, but that was for 2024, so there's nothing projected for personnel-wise for 2025.
No changes, yeah.
Yeah.
Though I think that's a, that's an employee he still has, the interim director of that, yeah.
Any questions, council? Okay, Addie, do you, do you have handy what the topics are for tomorrow? And if you wouldn't mind reading them?
Yes, tomorrow we have the police department, the fire department, the IT department, and community relations.
And then on Thursday?
And Thursday is, give me one second, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Planning.
Okay, very good. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 12:55, and we'll see you tomorrow at 10:00 AM. Thank you.